Welcome to the June meeting of the Village herself and planning commission. We're gonna start here with the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic which stands one nation, our God, the village, the dignity and justice for all. We do a roll call. Pamela Gil Martin.
Here.
Laura DeVaney. She may join us there by Zoom. Eduardo Cinianni. Christian Pico.
Present.
Okay, Bob Essay. Not here. Michelangelo.
Present.
Okay, Michael Anderson.
Present.
Okay, and Mark Shipper himself and Summer Sterling, unfortunately not here. So we have the first item on the agenda tonight is the review and approval of the previous minutes. If I could get a motion to approve it.
Second.
Or in favor?
Aye aye.
Okay, so we have, we had a few items on the agenda here, but I, the first item was to get an update on the shore committee by Paul Travis, but I don't think Paul could make it tonight. So I will make sure that we have it at the July meeting. And then they did a presentation at the town hall, the town board, and we've identified a site at the corner of, on the Route 39, but not too far from the Ridgewell Slade. So we'll look forward to get an update on this from Paul and DNB Engineering. There are the latest plans, as I understand, is a much larger plan that originally was anticipated to incorporate more areas to be assured within the village, including the town hall. So it's something that we'll take a look in July. The next item on the agenda, we had trustee Gina Resta, I was going to speak about. But I think here we have trustee Joe McLaughlin, I think they had the debate this afternoon, I think it was a full agenda for the day. So I think Gina also asked that maybe for her to come in the month of July. The next item that we have on the agenda is from Kevin McAllister, who is here with us tonight and he's gonna talk to us a little bit about his views on the dredging of Lake Agawam and the possible alternative solutions for the disposal of the dredging material. So maybe Kevin, if you want to make the presentation, great.
Chair. Come to the podium, I presume, or, okay. Good evening, commissioners. My name's Kevin McAllister. I'm founder of Defend H2O. We're a SAG Harbor Green Water and Coastal Atlantic organization. By way of my background, I'm quite well trained academically in the biological sciences. I have undergraduate degrees in natural resources, marine biology, and my masters of sciences in coastal zone match. Before returning to Long Island in 98, which then more than a decade in South Florida, working professionally several years in consulting, but mainly in government. So my extent of the subject tonight with dredge and fill is quite extensive. I was involved with evaluating numerous projects that involve dredging as well as being an active participant when Suffolk, sorry, Palm Beach County was a sponsor of some of these projects. So I've seen it all more recently in my tenure as iconic baykeeper for 16 years and now with Defend H2O. I've certainly been addressing dredging, you know, largely from the impact perspective. But again, my experience in this area certainly allows me to speak to it. Lake Agwam, of course, you're well versed in its conditions. I just want to emphasize in a freshwater system, the limited nutrient is phosphorus. And you may not recall this, but of back in 2013, when I was the baykeeper, I commissioned a examination, investigation into Lake Agwam with remedies that was performed by Lombardo Associates. So that report was provided to the village some years ago. Two main approaches from that was trying to deal with the phosphorus laden bottom water in a filtration uptake procedure utilizing some vacant land, but that's no longer possible with the parking area. And then ultimately dredging was discussed as well. With a highly eutrophic system such as this is, with chronic blooms die off, the settling being a receiving basin for the village's stormwater, I mean, there's enormous accumulation of organic material. And again, the cyclic nature of these blooms. So the phosphorus, which is a part of the engine to these, you know, driving these blooms, ultimately lays in those bottom sediments. And I've watched and you perhaps have seen my letter over the last couple of years observing some of the procedures, which I would argue is treating the symptoms, you know, the discoloration, other concerns versus the actual disease, which is again a thick organic bottom land. So in the investigation, ultimately, I think what has been a potentially non-starter of the village in investigating dredging is ultimately the, you know, recognizing or the mindset that this is all terrestrial, meaning the material is dredged, there would have to be a location for de-watering, ultimately draining off that water. There was discussion and maybe the commission actually heard some discussion on compaction and drying to facilitate trucking, but I would argue any way you shake it, I mean, you're talking, you know, enormous volume that has to be trucked off. So, you know, many, many road trips, impact to communities, to the neighborhoods, to the roads, et cetera. And of course, the, you know, the price tag of all this. So I believe perhaps that's been a bit of a sticker shock. I would argue that we need to start thinking outside of the box here. Again, I've seen dredging in all forms. I know how it can be a very visually dirty operation, which it is. But ultimately, we need to start to think about nearshore discharge. So by foregoing any of the handling, if you will, where we are trying to de-water the material, compact it, dry it and ship it, but rather a straight jet into the nearshore, into the swash zone. And we're talking in the middle of the winter, so you know, January, February, cold weather, cold weather months. The community is not at peak here, the disruption would be minimal. Ultimately, setting up a dredge, a hydraulic dredge in the lake and working after full investigation, and I will speak to that. But ultimately then just a discharge into the shoreline. So what are we talking about with the bottom sediments, of course? I mean, there's a mineral component, so we are talking some sand finds, you know, depends on the nature of or the characterization of that sediment. Contaminants have to be investigated, you know, what pollutants are we actually dealing with? Obviously runoff is going to bring in a host of things into this repository, as I call it. And then ultimately to assess, you know, the benthic life in the bottom. So, you know, those three basic investigations, sediment type, the extent of that sediment, contaminants. And then in a survey, which I have been involved in, and this really been more of a baseline in big projects, is to assess the bottom for life. I suspect because of the chronic nature of these blooms, the hypoxic nature, it's a dead bottom, you know, black manatees, you know, I suspect is much of the bottom and not supporting life on the bottom. So it's truly not a true ecosystem, if you will, or impaired ecosystem. So with a hydraulic dredge discharging that material, of course, there'd be some concerns and I impose the wintertime, obviously for both the lessened use of the resource, the beaches as well as the community. But on the blue-green algae, the microsystems that have been talked about, you know, the potential health hazard and pet hazard in the dead of the winter between the cold, cold water, cold air, as well as the salinity, the survivability, and I've already looked into this, it's quite minimal. You can't have a marine species out in, I'm sorry, freshwater species out in marine systems. It, you know, there's, the survival will not last.
How far out you think the dredge, the dredge material?
This pipe could be placed basically right into the swash zone, in other words, a straight shot for Magawam. Between Dune Church and the bathing corp, maybe there's, you know, between the two properties, I'd have to see the lay of the land better. But ultimately, you know, as short of a straight shot with that pipe as you could get, you don't have to go extensively into the surf zone because of the wintertime wave climate. With the activation and energy, you know, that material will be dispersed very quickly. It's largely organic, so it's going to go into suspension, it's mud. So it's going to be, it's going to smell, you're going to have distinctive odor, of course. The coloration in that water will turn chocolate. But again, with the surf zone and dilution, all this material can be dispersed in short order. Where really a one-time only dredging event, not to mess around with, let's do a pilot. You mobilize this equipment at millions of dollars a day. You know, let's get in and remove the organics in one shot and then we're not talking about it any longer. Boy, I think it's a very plausible approach. I have researched BEC's regulations. Again, in my work, I'm certainly versed in the Clean Water Act, which is federal regulations. New York's EEC in their guidance document for dredging, they don't preclude the discharge or the discharge of dredge spoil with contaminants. It has to be defined at what level of contaminants, what are the constituents, what are the contaminants we're dealing with? And again, can water discharges, sanitary period discharge be permissible? And that is a conversation at the village, and I would hope others that are versed in this can have with the DEC to again inform them of, again, of their regulations and to really try to ratchet down to exactly what we're dealing with. So.
This is this trustees though, don't they have say over the bottom?
Oh, the trustees, of course, should be involved. This is, I, I thank you for pointing it out. It's not exclusive, of course, to the village. This would have to be in partnership with the trustees, the town in general. Maybe funding partnership as well, as well as even for that matter, having the DEC Act as a partner to this.
So it's, and what are your thoughts on, I guess, timing, right? If we still don't have PRBs set up and we're still having all these inputs coming into the bay, excuse me, into Agawam. So is it a question of timing? Should we be waiting until we have PRBs, if we are considering PRBs and we have a sewer system in place mitigating some of the inputs?
Well, again, we're, phosphorus is in the bottom sediments.
And that's from the agricultural?
Oh, that's just history, years of what runs into the basin as well as the chronic nature of these blooms. This is biomass. These are plants that are in water column. When they die off, they're going back down to the bottom. So you have a chronic constant buildup and then a reoccurring release in the warm weather months. So it's, it's, the phosphorus in the bottom is an engine to these blooms. So to, you know, we need to be discussing full removal of this material. Again, I would argue that the cost and, and time that involved in de-watering and trucking is, is cost prohibitive. So, you know, if we're going to tackle this issue, we've, we've got to think in different terms. Again, I think the, you know, on first reaction, of course, the, you know, the optics, muddy water, oh my God, resistance into the sea. Well, you know, yeah, there's, there's going to be the visual, but when it's done, it's over with. And again, as a marine biologist, I'd argue in the dead of the winter, the implications to ocean, the ocean ecosystem is, is diminished. You know, obviously the fish stocks, things move offshore, you don't have the level activity nearshore in the cold weather months. And because of, again, cold and salinity, certainly when it comes to the concern about the system releasing to open ocean, you know, that's just not a factor, you know, it won't be persistent. So I would like to help the village, the trustees, really explore this in a legitimate way because I think it's the only way that we're going to resolve again this source and.
I want to thank you very much. Interesting presentation.
Thank you for the time this evening.
I have a quick question. How long of a process is it from beginning to end?
I'm not certain of that. It would have to, we, we need to bring in a professional that does this type of work. But ultimately, after characterizing the bottom, you know, what's the extent of material that needs to be removed? Ultimately, having then those that are in the, in the industry would be able to tell us what it would take. But we're not, again, we're bypassing any of the second handling. So this is a straight shot. I would think we're talking in the order of a couple of weeks as opposed to extended periods of time.
The dredging is something that's being explored by the Clean Water Committee. I know that they have an engineering firm, I think it may be even DNB Engineering looking to. And what's being proposed here is that instead of trucking and de-watering the dredged, dredged material, it's to possibly take it into the ocean. So it's definitely a very interesting suggestion and, you know, we'll definitely report to the Clean Water Committee.
Okay, wonderful. All right. Thank you, Mark. I appreciate everyone's.
Thank you, Kevin. The next item that we have on the agenda is we'd like to get an update on the Tree USA initiative. I think Christian was very involved in it, but I think you were too. Yeah, you were too. So if we could get an update, that'd be great.
Do you want to fill out? Yeah, I'll take it away. The Tree City USA has four requirements. And we're really essentially talking about public trees. We're not speaking about pressing private trees legislation at all. I just want to focus on public trees in this discussion. The Tree City USA's four requirements are, one, that we have an Arbor Day confirmation, which we have had two years in a row. So that's a budget in excess of $2 per capita, a budget line for trees, it's $38,000. So you check that box. We need a tree ordinance, that's chapter 107, which needs to have a revamp, I'll address that. That's work to be done. And we need a tree board. These are the four elements of Tree City US. So actions that we've taken so far to update this group of public discussions. Laura DeVaney gave us all the elements to work on the code. And I want to thank her, not here today, but thank her for all the work she's put in for that. We have all good elements that we've all had a chance to make up. Mike Anderson and my left and I met with Steve Phillips with the Fox Department. And the Fox are the ones who plant trees. DPW maintains a higher level of discussions. Clearly, they know policies, procedures in place for coordination between Fox Department and DPW. As far as recommendations, a tree board needs to be constituted. Too many boards in the village, the divisions, the, the task force. So the thought is to have it under the planning commission. And to have three members to be part of that tree board. One would be a board of trustee liaison with Fox Department, that takes care of trees. Second person would be a village planner. And the third one would be a member of the planning commission. Having a smaller tree board is better than having five members where it'd be in the discussion. So the recommendation to have three members. Now that board should work with Alex in council to establish its tree ordinance, all the homeworks or all the, everything that we need is there. So that board can oversee the work done by Alex and council to come up with a tree ordinance. Presentation during a BOT, a board of trustee work session, probably necessarily is needed. And from there to receive a formal request from the trustees to move forward on that issue. Other recommendations that we have at this point. Any questions?
You said one person would be from DPW?
No, one BOT liaison with, who oversees Fox Department, one village planner and one member of the planning commission.
I mean, there could be somebody from either the Fox Department or DPW.
They would be invited at every board meeting to tell the board what they've been up.
It's also important to note that, you know, if the village board wanted to have a proper tree commission, we obviously recommend that as well, but we do recognize the history of too many task forces commissioned. That's why we suggested that it fall into the planning commission. Otherwise, Christian and Michael and I and Laura have really done a great job of putting all the pieces in play. And we are ready to assist planner, Mr. Wallen, in crafting some policy. In our capacity as planning commission members or in the foreseeable future if we move forward with tree. So luckily, we have a board member here who I know is eager to protect our trees. Joe, do you have anything you'd like to say on this?
I mean, to say that I, when you point, if I didn't have a, you know, I mean, if you have the town on place, this reason of place hands of 30, 40 years. There are some of these factors, but the point is this is. The disease, so we don't end up with this five day disease or what happened, so.
I think that's solid, but actually just me one module. I would also, I guess, request that maybe perhaps we would have a work session with the village board where we can discuss this a little bit more detail and then also have some commitment from the board to pursue this further and work with Alex to capture that policy recommendation.
But just because I think that's a very good recommendation. However, I think that you have five members would not be so bad. We could get some expertise. We would have also some redundancy if somebody needs the board. You have only three members is a minimum that may be a little too small.
We could let the village board and we can say between three and five and get their guidance.
That's a good point. So I want to address the rest of the remarks. What? They're very good. And I know you try to tennis the planning commission meetings as you can. But we did address all this at the last meeting. I made a presentation. I'll be happy to send you the documentation. When I spoke earlier, policy procedures, in fact, the D P W has nothing on that. We went through a ten point checklist, went through all this. We have fifteen thousand trees. We know there's about five thousand that are desperately in care or replacement. We do not have any policies. We know we have to take it. We know how by everything this. Because we've laid all this out. I'll be happy to send you the documentation or you can attend by video, YouTube. It's been the last thing.
Christian's on it.
You comment?
I think that it might be.
Yeah, we would consider ourselves being members of the public planning commission members.
Yeah, but. That I mean, that sounds like a really nobody has any say in. I think that's I think that's a huge.
Well, they have say in the public process, village trade commission went necessarily back.
I think that if you make it to five boards, five board members, if you have a public and the person in the public, you have somebody who is has some background or expertise, you choose.
Sure, there's lots of people. I just think it sounds like you're.
You make a good point. I just.
I can understand why keeping. I mean, there's just way too many people to avoid, but still.
Yeah. We could revise that week then.
I think we're going to want some input from the elected officials too. They're going to have an opinion on this.
Same as well. The thing is though, to start working on tree ordinance, which is a revision of one oh seven. We need to have first a tree board that is committed to doing this work on. And that's a point.
So maybe the first step is that work session, setting the notion of a tree board and then having Alex, this wall work with us, follow information to tree board to begin for doing this policy. I think a work session should probably be the next step.
Yes, you mean the work session for whom?
The elected officials.
The elected officials, yes. And we could recommend at that point a five member board. Make some suggestions to whom we have and have some feedback.
The process is we're trying to get somebody at the end of the year. We're trying to get our application. Everything that key city USA needs done. And it has to be trying to file it by the end of the year. So the process needs to speed up. There's a lot of grant money out there that we're all getting large. Right. And we just don't want to prolong it more than we have.
To one's point, we need first that work sessions to come up with a tree ordinance that will take time several weeks. Trustees need to then embrace it, have public hearings, probably two public hearings. So we're talking about months. We only have six before the beginning of the year. So we need to work fast.
That sounds like a great plan.
So do we need to, as a planning commission vote on this at this time? That this is something we want to bring to the elected officials in official capacity? Is that our?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I think we could make the one of the motion that bring to the board of trustees a proposal to finalize the application to Trinity USA by the end of the year. And that we take those required actions that are necessary for the village to complete within that timeframe.
Yes, I'd love to make that motion and I'd like you to second it.
Okay.
I want to second it.
Okay, right.
All right, well, if ever. Okay, great. The the next item that we have on the on the on the agenda was a presentation by village clerk Kathy Sweeney or Jackie Allen. But I think Jackie was out sick today, so she asked me to postpone it to July. I understand that it's, I think Kathy was also going to speak to us about cybersecurity and the importance of using our village email address in all the correspondence and give her all the proportions. Is Alex on the online? Yes. So the next item on the agenda is with our dear village planner, Alex Wallen. And I have two items here on the agenda that I would like Alex to possibly touch on. And certainly you can ask him other questions. The first one was there was an R F P, a request for proposal for the architectural and historical structure reconnaissance survey that was due on May twenty seventh. We'll update us on this.
Joe, can you hear me?
Yeah, we cannot see you though.
Hey. I'm sorry, I'm traveling right now, so I'm not able to turn on my camera, so I hope the audio will suffice for now.
Okay.
Um, yeah, so we, the village had issued an R F P, a request for proposals for a architectural and historical reconnaissance survey. And we did get two responses, which the village is now evaluating. So the neck effect is the architect or do you go forward just going to
Alex, we're losing you.
To responses. Um. And then to the interview most consultant. Oh, I'm sorry, it may not be great. Can you hear me okay?
It's out and in.
Hello?
Yeah, it's coming in and out, but that's all right. So we only we only got two responses?
That's right, two responses.
Well. And are they local firms?
They are both based in New York, I believe, and have done work all over the place.
Did there's a company in, are we allowed to, we have to an R F P, we can't go out to bid?
It is, it's through the contract reporter. So it is advertised through the contract reporter to all the states in New York.
Yeah, I'm aware of a company that we worked with at the town level from Georgia, I believe. With the historical concepts, it did great work for the pattern of Manhattan bays.
Right, that's true. I mean, I'm surprised that only two person it was advertised. I thought the timeframe for the response was a little short.
I can guess who the two people were, with the two firms.
Is that right? That we were, I thought the timeframe for the response was a little short. So right now, Alex, the intent is to revive, to look at your two proposals and make a decision?
And so the A R B is going to be making a recommendations to the board of trustees. And if the board of trustees approves, we would enter into a contact with one of those consultants firms.
Are they, are the, are we considering possibly going out to R F P again with and changing some of the language to attract other responses?
Um, I suppose that would be up to the A R B and ultimately up to the trustee. They like, they wanted a broader scope of responses. I know we did advertise the R F P and we sent it out to certain firms that we thought might be interested in responding. And ultimately, these were the two responses that we got.
Okay, thank you, Alex.
No problem. And I'll mention, kind of in conjunction with this, the village had applied to the state of New York Parks and Historic Preservation Department for a grant funding. And we just received word that the village is going to receive ten thousand dollars of a state grant to support this effort. So we're very excited about that.
That's great news.
Great news.
Are we allowed to ask at this time the two companies that have submitted an R F P or excuse me, a response to the R F P?
Yeah, it's a good question. I'm not sure of the answer and unfortunately I don't have the front of, I wouldn't be able to tell you. But if maybe, no, I'll follow up.
Okay. And then the other item on the agenda, I'm not sure whether you could also report to us about the the possibility to accept the the town license for right now contractors doing work within the village of Southampton. Must have a county license for home improvement contractors. And I thought there was discussion with Janice Scher to possibly also accept town licenses. Alex?
Yes, I know there was some conversation about that. I think that was something that some of the attorneys we're looking to with the village attorney. So unfortunately, I don't have more information about that, but I know it's something that's being explored.
Right. Well, I would encourage possibly if you could maybe reach out to Janice Scher and see whether an agreement could be worked out. I know that the town has various agreements at that level with the various villages, including the village of Quell, Sag Harbor, Sagapond. We have all of those villages accept the town licenses. And one of the advantages that in case a complaint is brought against one of those contractors it is dealt with at the town level with the town, it's easier than having to go with the to the county. So yeah, it'd be great if maybe we could reach out to the town. Any other comments, Alex?
Oh, other than I think that there would be an interminable agreement that we would enter with the town. I know it's being presented.
Okay, exactly. Do we have any other questions for Alex?
Sorry, are we talking about reciprocity agreement for the landscapers amongst this to do business in the village? Which refers to seventy seven dash four that we worked on a month ago? Alex, can you hear?
Right.
Is that what we're talking about?
No, right. What I'm talking about is the home improvement contractors license in order to go with the permit.
Yes.
Whether you do an alteration, every time you do an alteration to an existing house, it does not apply to new construction. But it applies for alteration, enlargement of existing houses. In order to get a permit, you have to be licensed.
The town has a process that we want to be a part of.
Right, the town issues its own license. Now, in terms of the landscaping, that's a very, very good point, because for example, the town of Southampton right now does not require, does not have any special requirement for landscapers. But the town of East Hampton and many other municipalities do require landscapers to have proper training in terms of the all of the chemicals that have been used in landscaping. That's something else that we could look into. To require the landscapers to be able to disclose or require to disclose all of the chemicals that they use on people's properties and some sort of.
That's at the town level because the village has already decided to use reciprocity with the town in terms of committing to do landscaping in the village. Letship is sealed by legislation already a month ago.
Was it? I can ask.
Yes.
For landscapers, for landscapers.
That's part of everyone's thinking you pass to, and say the village having their own licensing. We're allowing the village landscapers to use the town licensing and rule of the village license.
Hmm. I'm not aware. I think that, okay. So, all right. And there was an actual formal agreement written on that?
Not aware.
Well, there has to be, yeah. There has to be, but I have, I don't know if that was signed, if that was signed by the mayor yet. The mayor, the mayor is the only one who can sign a contract, so we have to sign the contract.
This falls under general business law seven 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 for home improvement contractors license. There is no special, the town does not issue any special license to landscape.
They issue, they issue landscape licensing for landscapers. And the village, the village is that is instead of our own licensing for landscapers we're allowing the, to regulate things that we're allowing the landscapers to go as town licenses to apply to the door. That makes sense.
There is no special, I happen to also be on the town board, on town licensing report. There is no special license for landscapers. So I think some things should be clarified.
There is a town license.
There's a town, there's a home improvement contractor's license.
That may have.
That that landscapers apply for, right? So it's under general business law seven seven seven. It's not specific to landscapers.
This is one thing I'm not involved with at the town, which I'm fortunate.
So it's, let's review it further.
That's why I raised the point.
Yeah, it's a good point to rest. I think there may be some.
So whatever licensing is needed, the landscapers, when we drafted, when the committee drafted the law, we are allowing the, that licensing, that licensing to apply to landscapers. So we like to regulate the issue.
Yeah, but it, it's a freebie for, okay, I think we should review it further. I'll certainly review it a little bit more.
Again, it's up to the mayor to enter, the mayor is the only one who can enter, who can legally enter, enter into a binding contract with the town.
Okay, okay, we'll review this a little bit further. All right, thank you so much. All right, thank you, Alex. Is Alex still with us?
Yes.
Yes, I am.
Okay, very good, Alex. So we look forward to working with you on more items, including the tree ordinance. You know, you heard all the comments we did before about it?
Yes, I'll follow up with Mike. I heard most of the conversation. And now one thing I'll add if you can hear is that we're going to be trying to advance the New York State DRESS Code to get villages to adopt that. So it's another project we're working on.
That's great news. Alex, I don't know if you're aware, but I wrote it for the town. So if you need model language on, on top of the inserted model language because I had to, of course, leave it into the town code, which will be more similar to village code than whatever the model code is for the state.
I appreciate that. I shared what the town adopted with our village attorney earlier today.
Great.
Yeah, very. This is a great, absolutely. New York stretch code is would be a great enhancement to our community. Although it will add a limited cost to the construction. And it will require hers rating and some additional inspections during construction. At the end of the day, it's a win win situation whereby the homeowners end up with a better home, better built home. And the community gets the benefit of being more energy efficient. All right. So thanks a lot, Alex. And so the next item on the agenda, we have in terms of updates and news development. We want to make sure that everybody is aware that we have an election coming up on June seventeenth. And the election will be held at the cultural center. And that if anybody wants to vote early, there are forms available here at with the village clerk. And if we also have forms to vote, I'm not sure of voting online, or absentee ballots also. So you can either participate at the village right now or come on the subject or send an absentee ballot. So we look forward to have a great participation for this election. So based on this, I'd like to make your, make your motion to adjourn unless there's any other comments?
What's your comment?
No comments?
Wait a second. You've run in the ad in the press, inviting people to come to your meeting. You want to hear their ideas about the planning commission and what's going on in the planning. And we heard nothing about what the master plan is.
So the master plan has been, the task force has been reviewing the master plan. But we can have a conversation about that.
Well, what did Jesus, it was in the end of the paper?
We thought the end of the paper, there was going to be a presentation about coming, this meeting. So we're like, what's going on?
There was an ad in the paper, there was a printed ad in the paper.
Right, it was a, we're encouraging people to come to the planning commission to voice their ideas, to bring their ideas.
The master plan and.
About, about.
Sure, we could take some of your comments and then we could ensure that the task force receives them.
I just want to hear about the master plan, that's what it's gonna be.
Well, it's been, it's now under the purview of the planning commission. The master plan is, is under the purview of the, what is their formal title?
It's a task force. It's their committee on task force.
By Bill Mager.
We don't understand this, the advertising.
And so I run.
The idea is that we want to encourage participation to the planning commission.
Wait a second, you want to encourage participation, but you're ready to during the meeting before you ask the public if they had any input?
You're right.
We, we were at a practice after two years of no public participation.
Nobody comes.
But we, I think it's, we should make sure that at the end of our meeting, there is a public comment opportunity to hear from you.
Okay, so here I am.
Yeah, let's hear it.
Here's the public right here. My name is Maury Durbin. I live at ninety seven Freeze Lane. I've been a resident of the village since nineteen eighty two. I would like our bicycle lanes more clearly marked. At one time, we did not allow bicycle riding on Job's Lane or Main Street. The sign, a bicycle escape or roller skate, those signs have disappeared. And now we have the farmers market signs in place. So I think it's dangerous. I don't think people know that at one time, I don't know if there's a village ordinance, but at one time there were signs that said no bicycle and a roller skate on Main Street and Job's Lane.
There are still, there's still signage.
You can't see them. You can't see them. They used to be in the middle of the road and now we have farmers market signs in the middle of the road. Or at least the last time I ventured down those roads, because I usually don't go down those roads because.
So you'd like to see improved signage?
Of bicycle lanes.
So you want to see, just so I understand.
Improved signage of bicycle lanes, bicycling not allowed on Main Street and Job's Lane. On Main Street between Hampton Road and Newgin Gas Lane and Job's Lane.
They have the square roads.
Just right there.
Before squares.
No, 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 they can ride their bike down by the firehouse and Newgin.
I'm letting you know about the existing code, that there's four roads that it's not prohibited on. That is prohibited. And Main Street, Job's Lane, Newgin and.
I never, I didn't know, no, I thought Newgin. I thought Newgin and the other one were the ones that we were allowed to go to bypass downtown village.
Yeah, Newgin, Europe, that's right.
Well, there's four. I don't know off the top of my head.
Job's Lane, Main Street, Hampton Road.
And one, and one other. It's a square.
No.
Okay, and then vaguely, this is another thing about the sewer district. I know he has to put up with the other time.
He's the traffic engineer.
We're going to talk about that. That's why we have diagonal parking in Hampton Road as an extra. So where's the sewer plant going to be? The village is going to dump, take the sewer outside of the village to the town hall?
Sounds like a new location.
Right, so right now they identified the property at the corner of Calum Road thirty nine and David Wright's Lane, but on the other side of David Wright's Lane.
And what happened to the behind the police?
So that, the, the, that was an initial study that would have been funded about ten years ago. It was actually funded by Jay Schneider when he was the other county, under Mark Capri was the mayor. And that was, there was a design under H two N for a smaller plant right behind the police station.
Okay, so the small plant that we got done, so now we have to go to a bigger plant. I'm just trying to understand.
Now, there was a sewer commission that was created that then decided to propose a much larger plant to also handle the town hall, to also handle the school, to also handle. And then have the plant, it was one, all the possibility was properly next to the cemetery, between Burger King and cemetery. So that was one possibility. And somehow this possibility, the sewer commission deemed it to be unfeasible. So they went to another site, which is there's a triangle piece at the corner of Hampton Road and.
Not in the, you're the one going.
Another Hampton Road, Calum Thirty Nine.
Okay, just as a taxpayer, I'm wondering, we paid for H two N to do a sewer study. Somehow or other, that went away. And now as a taxpayer, we're paying other people to do a sewer study. And we still don't know what's going to happen with the sewer study. Just, this is my, that's right.
You're absolutely right.
Now I haven't, oh, he left already. I have another question, okay? And that is, you already have a pipe going from Lake Adlong under the road to the ocean.
Yes.
Now, what does that take care of?
That pipe is an overflow pipe. It's not, it's, it's an overflow pipe that has nothing to do with the
Dredge spoil.
The dredge material.
But if it was acceptable at one time for that overflow water to be dumped out there, okay? Would it not be acceptable for this dredging to be dumped out there as well?
I don't think we can comment on that.
Well, that's just, that's my input. I'm just giving the input, that's all.
It's existing infrastructure, for sure.
I mean, there is, yes. What, what Mr. McAllister was proposing is something that, you know, is somewhat unusual. I think it's something that could be reviewed and should be reviewed by the Clean Water Committee.
Okay.
Because dredging is definitely something that will solve a lot of the problems associated with the guy one. And dredging is, you know, it's, it had been dredged, I think in the nineteen fifties, they did take a, a large.
Yeah, no disrespect to Mr. McAllister, but I'm not entirely sure how legal it is to dump dredge spoil in the ocean, I'm not bad, yeah.
For the D E C, yes.
He doesn't know what the contaminants are.
Yeah, and dredge spoil is highly regulated, so.
Wasn't there a study done a year or so ago on that?
By Goldler?
Yeah, there's a lot of heavy metals and stuff.
We seem to have a lot of studies done.
Well, if I'm studies, it's a rollout scenario.
Do you know?
Action costs.
Just as a taxpayer, that's all.
No, it's a, it's a, it's a great point. Action sadly at times costs tens of millions of dollars or studies might cost tens of thousands of dollars. And then that dictates the appropriate action, because we don't want to take an action that is not necessarily the right choice.
It's absolutely true. The sewer, there are many components, many views of value. It's not, I don't think there is a consensus. It's absolutely true, the sewer, there are many components, many views about it, it's not, I don't think there is consensus about, you know, where should we go in terms of the sewer. I think that there is, everybody's in agreement, that there is a need for wastewater treatment within the villages, within the downtown area. That because the water level, the water table is so high, it's preventing any further development of any other wet use within the village. So there is no question that there is an agreement that some wastewater treatment is needed. The question is that should we just do a small plant to handle whatever is existing here and maybe allow some apartments above it? Or should we try to sewer the entire?
There are a lot of questions to be asked.
Big area.
Well, he came in to ask these questions, that's what I'm getting.
You are right, you are right.
It's a, it's a part of the process.
I think you're making an extremely good point.
That's how you get it, okay, excuse me, oh, thank you very much.
We're glad to have you here, and we appreciate your comments to remind us, to make sure we have a public portion.
Are they doing anything to stormwater runoff to control what goes into Lake Agewam?
I am.
Very, very new, there is a, very new.
Unless you get that under control, what's the point?
Well, I think they've analyzed the contaminant, contaminants and the percentages and where they're coming from. So I think that's why they're targeting the sewer, I don't know the percentage of the inputs that are coming from stormwater.
There's a lot, a lot of scum.
The abatement processes or the mechanisms for mitigation such as PRBs, terminal reactive barriers, bioswales are significantly less expensive than doing something like sewer. So there's a lot more, I think, tools in the toolset for solving that problem.
We, we used to, in fact, they, they put a whole bunch of leasing places at Boden Square three, four years ago.
Right.
I mean, that, that's the kind of thing you want to do.
Absolutely.
We did some on Hill Street ten years ago.
I mean, I think there are probably some really inventive ways they could redesign Agewam Park to be more of a park for twenty twenty two, that adds more of an ecosystem than just be a swath of.
I think you could put one of those seven tanks or something in there.
Yeah.
But I think they should be looking at, because that's probably where the heavy metals are coming from. Particularly asbestos from disc brakes and under brakes.
Well, the, the village is also now looking, I think our longtime head of the Bound Republic Works, our engineer, Derek Valeski is retiring.
Again, I'm an engineer.
Sorry?
Gary is not an engineer.
You're right, you're right, he's not an engineer. He's not an engineer, but we are, the village is looking to hire a new person to replace him.
You're looking for an engineer?
Maury.
No, I was just wondering, I always thought the work of that position should be an engineer.
You're right, you're right, traditionally, traditionally, this position was always.
And not just someone who has seen work.
What about planner?
Traditionally.
You hired my guy.
The head of, the head of public works were always engineers, it's true.
Not in this village.
The town is, is an engineer.
Not in the village, in the village, it's usually a good amount of seniority.
Do we have your permission to adjourn tonight?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
All right, thank you, so I'll give you an extra.
Thank you very much.
Second.
And our sec, our next meeting is July seventh.
Oh, I'm busy, I'm sorry.
Oh, we'd love to see you.
So we'll see you all, thank you.
Thank you.